Call to order this special meeting of the Ellsworth City Council, March 15th. All councils are present. And I'd just like to open this meeting with a couple of thoughts. The reason that the city council is here on a Sunday, the day before regularly scheduled meeting, is to address the impact that the Corona-19 is having in our community. I know that I speak for the entire council when I say that communication and information from people who make decisions is extremely important. We do not need to panic, but we do need to plan. There is and will continue to be a lot of emotion around this pandemic. As city leaders, we should be a conduit to ensure the delivery of fact-based information. The federal and state government continuing to introduce new directives and recommendations, and that changes every day, and we need to be aware of that. Our job at the local level is to implement strategies that support these directives, provide opportunities to reduce exposure, and support all citizens. City government plays an important role in situations like these. Our first responders, police and fire, face greater challenges but remain an essential resource. Manager Cole will be discussing some changes to operations that will reduce exposure in an attempt to reduce the spread of the virus. This will hopefully serve us well and reduce the degradation of our city and first responder workforce. There will be other challenges in the community as more resources are closed as a means to slow the spread of the virus. One of the best things about living in this community is the willingness of neighbors to help neighbors. I want to urge all of us to be aware of the people in our community who are more vulnerable and may need support. The city can serve as a starting point when a need is identified. We will be more successful moving beyond this challenge if we put our efforts in working together. The council will continue to support the city to do what is within our control to overcome this challenge. And today, that's what we're here to do, is to just talk about what is and isn't within our control, to hear some of the changes that are being made at the city level, and to continue to move this issue forward and address challenges that come up in our community. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Manager Cole and to share with us what the city staff have been talking about.
Thank you, councillor. Like every community in the state, the country, the world for that matter, we've been planning on a regular basis, as recently as last Friday, our group met in the chambers here to talk about travel restrictions and other measures. Previously, we had implemented procedures and protocols for hygiene and hand washing and social distancing and all the same things that the CDC has recommended. In the last 72 hours, there have been a number of developments and other communities responding, and we feel it's necessary to take additional precautions for the protection of our employees and the public we serve. And as Chair Hamilton has said, to hopefully help slow down the impacts of this pandemic, flatten the curve, as they have said. I would add that today, we had a call-in meeting of our management team. Over the weekend, Chair Hamilton, Deputy City Manager Moat, and myself have been in constant contact and thus called today's emergency meeting. At this morning's management team, we went department by department discussing how do we take reasonable actions to minimize contact and yet still serve the public and do our job. I would say that we are at City Hall. What we're planning to do is have restricted access to City Hall. We're going to call on the public to, wherever possible, do their business online, over the phone, by mail, and we're working with the police chief and the facilities manager. So for those people who can't otherwise be attended to, we'll have somebody set up out front that can monitor the situation and bring the people out to them if it's necessary to do their business with all said precautions. In this morning's meeting, we went through all the different areas. I'm going to call upon Deputy City Manager Moat to go through that with you briefly as to the individual actions and protocols being set forth. As you know, we have a number of facilities within the city that go beyond City Hall, and we'll be addressing that. We have prior to today, Friday, as of Friday, we had already put travel restrictions in place in terms of certainly out-of-state travel and other protocols for minimizing the need for meetings by using online meeting tools, Zoom, teleconferences and such. All of that will go into place as well. I also want to mention that as more and more precautions are taken and as we get into the heart of this pandemic, certainly there are community impacts that we will see. And in talking with Chair Hamilton this morning, we want to make sure that our community knows that while we have no silver bullets in terms of the hardship individual businesses may feel or individuals, we certainly want to be able to get out information to the public and to individuals and businesses and organizations. Make sure you have the best information. Go to our website where we're linked to the CDC, the main CDC, which is, we're following CDC Center for Disease Control protocols, and we want to pass on that information as well. There undoubtedly will be businesses impacted by this pandemic. I reached out to Chamber of Commerce Director Gretchen Wilson today and certainly want to get together with her leadership and our Economic Development Director, Jana Richards, to talk about how we work together because we don't want anyone to feel isolated through this. So there's a lot of work ahead of us, certainly in all fronts, but by taking these precautions and working as a community, we will get through it. This too shall pass. With that, I would ask for Deputy City Manager Tammy Moat to come up and talk about some of her angel departments and the impacts it may have on services, or at least how the services are provided to the public.
Thank you. As City Manager Cole stated, we do look for the residents in the community to use our online services. We will be locking the doors in all locations in City Hall, including the Fire Department, the Church Street entrance, as well as the main entrance. If you need to come into City Hall, we ask you to come through the Church Street entrance. We will be closing the main steps to City Hall. There is a phone located in the atrium there, so people can just pick up the phone. It rings a dispatch, and we can put you through to the appropriate department.
Also, I forgot to mention the lockbox we're going to have.
Yep, I was going to mention that as well. So we are going to be notifying outside agencies that all outdoor meetings will be canceled in City Hall for the public meeting rooms. We'll be placing a drop box out there for any payments for water, sewer, tax payments. Fortunately, last week was tax week, so the majority of the tax payments have come in. However, we would like to waive interest until March 31st for those that remain unpaid. We'd also like to waive any interest on credit card payments for anybody that's calling in. The city now charges 2.5%, but I'd like to have the city pick up those costs for those on-call, when you call in. IT will be working with department heads on VPN access in case they need to work from home, and they'll also be issuing cards to employees that need to be in City Hall because we have the access to get into City Hall. Talked about experiments. The general assistants will see no clients on site. That will all be handled via email or by phone. For code enforcement, be business as usual. They will evaluate each outside inspection, determine if they actually need to go and visit the site. There may be other options. They may be able to do it via email or take pictures, but they will determine if they need to go to those locations. Assessing, it can all be done online or by phone. The economic development and planning can also be done all online and by email. The Union River Center for Innovation will be closed as well to outside individuals. They will be locking their doors. The Highway Department will continue as normal. The garage will be closed to any public access. Transfer station, the recycling center is going to continue to be open. However, we're going to use precautions there for social distancing, and they won't be able to help the customers with putting their trash or the recycling out of their vehicles. The Water Department, they are going to be limiting the staff to entrance into City Hall. Their staff's going to stay in their locations on Shore Road or at the water treatment plant. He said that we'd like to keep all service orders to emergencies only. The Wastewater Department, they're going to ensure that all site vendors' visits will be suspended. The only processes that they have there that have customers coming to the wastewater treatment plant is a septicage, but it's done by the septic haulers. They do all of their own septicage dumping, and any tickets and stuff will just email, I mean, excuse me, email or mail to them. We talked with the Library Director, Amy Weishardt. They're looking to hold an emergency meeting to determine steps in case they need to close as other libraries are closing around the state as well. For the Fire Department, both chiefs are here if they want to expand on this, but you can get your burn permits online. They're going to be posting a sign down there that there's no public access into the building in the Fire Department, and they will be keeping the doors closed there as well. We will be meeting with Northern Light Medical Transport tomorrow.
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow, I believe, and determining what we need to do in that situation with them. The last one is the Police Department. They're going to handle as many calls as possible via telephone to minimize exposure. They'll be issuing summons when practical instead of arresting to minimize exposure risks. They're going to be promoting frequent and proper handwashing as well as frequent hand sanitizer, just as we are to all of our employees. And the office is having instructions to minimize unnecessary public contacts. So I just wanted to provide the number. The main line at City Hall is 667-2563. Again, 667-2563. You can find all the departments within there. So I'm going to be posting on Facebook and the website this evening, and I'll have the direct numbers for each department if you're looking for a specific department. So please visit our website, ellsworthmain.gov, and you can also see information on the city's Facebook page as well.
Just one thing to add to that. We are also doing planning around, in the cases of information technology, IT, and our finances, to make sure that we have access to our money, that we can pay our bills, our payroll, that the trains keep running, so to speak. So we're working with the IT manager and the finance director on making sure we have remote access if we need it, make sure all those things are in place, just as precautions.
Yep, and I will be meeting with the City Clerk, Finance Director, and Director of IT on how we move forward with all of that.
Councillor's questions, comments?
As far as EMS goes, Northern Light Fire, do they have enough personal protective equipment for calls?
Richard.
Hey, Richard, Department of Fire Chief. Some of that is very limited in supplies. I have acquired a little bit on my behalf of the Fire Department, and Northern Light has a small amount as well here at the station. I can't speak to what they have for supplies in their own outside stocks, but I believe it's pretty limited.
Yeah, thus our meeting tomorrow morning.
Okay. And another question for you specifically. When you get a dispatch call, are there any screening questions asked, like recent travel history, fever, cough symptoms?
Yes, from my understanding, if you do dial 911 and get the Regional Communications Center, depending on what you're giving for information, such as I'm having breathing difficulties, it will trigger another set of questions that they've added to the dispatch protocols. Of those questions, based on the answers from the individual that's calling, they will be able to give a determinant as to whether there's, one, not enough information to make a determination; two, it's a negative determination; or, three, it's a positive determination that there may be a potential for the need of protecting yourself for a virus, whether it's the coronavirus or otherwise. And that information is supposed to be relayed to our other dispatches, whether it's here in-house, City Hall, MedCom, or wherever the call is going to, so that that can ultimately be passed along to the first responder.
Excellent. Have you had any communication with Main Coast as far as what their ultimate plan is? If they're changing their procedures, drive-through testing, et cetera, et cetera?
We have not, to my knowledge, Richard, on that. Although, I was talking to Chair Hamilton before the meeting about that it might be good to have somebody from the hospital at the council meeting tomorrow night to talk about, to address the public and, again, give them good information, but that has not, as of yet, been arranged.
So just one quick comment in terms of if individuals are going to be using the phone for access coming in, probably a good idea to have the disposable phone available. Councillor Blanchett.
Mr. Chairman, have we heard anything from the schools?
Manager Cole.
I have been in communication with Superintendent Higgins over the weekend. I know that he was on a conference call yesterday with other superintendents around the state with the Department of Education. As you know, there are a number of schools and school districts that are closing, and I'm waiting on, and we're waiting on, guidance from the superintendent as to their, I know they're evaluating the situation, and I would expect to hear back from him by the end of the day.
Thank you.
And I do think, in terms of whether it's schools, daycares, other settings, when we think about the potential, and if you look at what has happened just in one day yesterday, where there were multiple school closings and a lot of other decisions about other institutions closing, that we're likely in this community to see more closings and across as a way to stop the spread of the virus. That's one of the impacts that we talk about in terms of how that impacts on the community, on families, ability for work, all of those things. And that's the kind of thing that starts to put a strain on the community and why it's critically important for lines of communication to be open. And also, and I can't stress this enough, it's so important to base decisions on fact, and the most important thing that we can do is to be a conduit of factual information and to direct people to look at information that's fact-based. Because all of us, when we face with these types of situations, it's emotional, and it creates emotion, and when you react by emotion rather than on fact, then we can't be as helpful as a community. And all of us really are in this. There's no one source that's going to help us through this. But the more we can kind of keep that level of panic and fear down and address challenges as they come up, and that's why the one thing that the city can do is be a resource to say, here's a need, here's something that's happening in our community, we don't know how to address it, so that we can think about, are there resources in the community, or to be able to link to the appropriate resource. It might be the state or the federal government in terms of resources that might be available or just knowledge about that. The National Declaration of an Emergency released a lot of resources. There's a bill that passed in the House that's going to the Senate, which will provide additional resources. That can be hard to know what's exactly in it and working in terms of businesses with the chamber to understand that. That's what I think the city can do and can be a resource.
Yep. To that end, Mr. Chair, I just saw a press release from the governor that they're going to be extending unemployment insurance to people impacted by the coronavirus pandemic. The United States Small Business Administration, through the President's emergency declaration, was empowered with certain programs to help disaster-impacted businesses. So our goal is to help be that glue, hopefully, that holds everything together, working with our partners, the chambers of commerce, the community organizations. And it not only affects businesses, but it affects nonprofits, and it affects people, you know, the homeless, those who are vulnerable. So we all got to work together, because I'm sure we're going to have issues to grapple with we haven't even anticipated yet.
From my hospital standpoint in Bar Harbor, it's not if it's going to be here, it's when, but the key is that most people will be just fine and not spreading the virus. Washing your hands frequently. Don't touch your face. Common sense, things that we do just in a regular flu season. And most people, it's just like a common cold. It's the infirm and the elderly that are most at risk. So if you are not feeling well, you have a fever and a cough, don't go check on grandma. Even though grandma is isolated, have somebody else who's not sick check on grandma. And that will help protect our neighbors who are infirm or elderly. Also, if you are healthy and you have a neighbor who's elderly, check on your neighbor. See what they need. It's basically going to be neighbor looking out for neighbor, but at the same time, keeping the social distance. So if you're going to check on your neighbor, maybe you don't need to go in, you just need to know that they're okay. Pick up the phone and call them and ask them how they're feeling. Do you need anything? Can I bring you something? Things along those lines. If you do have a fever and you have a travel history, hospitals are testing, and so go to your hospital, call ahead. Do not just show up at the hospital. Call ahead because there's preparations that need to be made. We need to know you're coming in advance. And so when you call ahead, sometimes you can actually just call your primary care provider, and they'll do an outpatient order, and you don't even have to come into the hospital. They'll just do the test, and then they'll ask you to self-isolate until we know the result of the test. We're also going to check you for influenza at the same time and RSV. So influenza A, influenza B, and RSV, because right now, there's four things out there. Most commonly, influenza A. So call ahead. We need to know you're coming. We need to have our personal protective equipment on, and we're probably going to just check you right in the car.
Thank you. Very helpful. Councillor Blanchett.
I have a question that just popped up from a resident. Will the city suspend fees for using online payment systems?
Yes. Well, are you talking the 3% or?
We're working with the company, main.gov, to see if they can. If not, we were looking at reimbursing them. They would just send us the information, we'd reimburse them that 2.5%.
Okay. Thank you.
Good point.
And we hope to have more information on that, so that if we can discuss it at tomorrow's meeting as well, if there's some information in terms of being able to waive that and reimburse those costs out of the.
And Tammy, that's a pass-through, correct? That's what the state charges us? So it's a...
It charges the customer directly.
Right.
So we...
But it's not a city revenue.
Correct.
Right. So this would be the city making up the difference. I do want to say that our staff has really stepped up over the last few weeks, and it does bring out the best in people, so I want to thank. How quickly are people mobilized, starting with Tammy? You know, she and I were on the phone, you know, a lot of yesterday rounding up people and doing these things, and, you know, our department heads today, they all came with ideas and prepared, and everyone was constructive. And if that's any reflection of the community's response, I think that working together, we'll get through this.
So I would like, a lot of people are here, just offer the opportunity, if anybody had something that they wanted to either raise a question or just make a comment, feel free to step up to the podium and do that.
Gary Fortier. Having gone through some of this and other disasters, I'd ask our Ellsworth EMA if anything is happening countywide through Hancock County Emergency Management. That's an excellent place to buy protective clothing in bulk. That way, it goes through them, quicker federal reimbursement, so the city isn't on the hatch for it. I was just curious as to whether there's been anything started countywide.
Yeah. If I could initially address that, I'll call on Richard. Andrew Sankey, actually, it was his deputy, Richard, the name is, yeah, attended our staff team meeting on this a couple of weeks ago. We've been in touch with Andrew's office, and of course, they are, under MEMA, the Main Emergency Management, they coordinate on a county level. So we are working with them, particularly if there is disaster relief, we would want to coordinate, because there are typically county and state thresholds that have to be met. I do know that in terms of masks, what masks there are have largely and rightfully so and go to the medical community, but I know, Richard, and perhaps you can address this, is it N95 masks or that's that?
Yes, terminology is everything. So to start off with, to answer Mr. Fortier's question, we are working closely with the EMA at the Hancock County level. A lot of what we've already discussed and said is exactly what that discussion has come from. There are forms for maintaining log of documents of expenses that we may incur, that we need to take care of, that if there is, if it does trickle all the way down to disaster relief, without those forms, we're not going to see anything. So we talked about that this morning in our briefing. That'll be all different departments tracking their expenses. As far as the personal protective equipment, I did reach out to Hancock County EMA last week to see what, if anything, they could help me as far as trying to get the N95 masks. And there are several different types of N95 masks, so the ones obviously particularly that we're looking for are designed for medical use. Those are almost extinct at the moment. I was able to submit a request form through them to MEMA to be able to try to dip into their stock supply a little bit to get the appropriate masks to us. We did find some lesser quality, I'll call it, N95 masks than the medical side, and in speaking with the Bureau of Labor, I was able to make sure that those were acceptable to use with nothing else at our choice, which I was directed to do so. The other difficulty of that is to wear these masks, you do have to be medically cleared and fit-tested, and they're not waiving that requirement as well. So we're in the process of upping that game to get as many as we can of our own staff fit-tested for that, and any other department members that do carry a medical clearance for respiratory protection. A lot of ongoing pieces to it. Yes.
Do you have the hoods for that as well?
We do have one. We actually borrowed it from the airport, had one. We use a much more sophisticated machine for our SEBAs, which isn't equipped to test these smaller surgical mask-type things, but we do have the equipment now, yes.
And who's doing your fit testing?
We do the fit testing in-house. The medical clearance, obviously, we have to get the physicians to do for us.
Can I have a question?
Yes, sir.
Since you talked about the N95 mask, isn't it a little disconcerting that you made a comment that Northern Light is not prepared for all these, I mean, healthcare workers are a risk factor. I mean, you guys are risk factors, you know, not just going to Japan or China. You guys are risk factors, the healthcare providers, and the hospitals are risked because they're being exposed, right? So how come they don't have the right equipment?
First of all, I'm not saying that we're not prepared, but the supply and demand for these pieces of equipment, when they're not there, they're not... for these pieces of equipment, when they're not there, they're not there. So we are working diligently to find them wherever we can. We do have a small supply, both us and Northern Light. And again, I can't speak to what Northern Light has in their stockpile, wherever that may be.
Yeah, I just, I would just clarify because I don't think that was what you were intending. We will try to have a representative from the hospital, Northern Light Hospital here tomorrow, if they're available, to talk about what they're doing. I know that system is, has some very rigorous plans in place, as I'm sure every hospital does. So it would be better for them to answer that question directly in terms of what they are doing and to let the community know how to access their resources.
If I might say additionally, we've expanded our protocol to respond to different types of incidences. And if anything has any indication that we're responding to a virus type incident, we're limiting that exposure by not everyone in the crew running in quickly. You know, the EMS units are gonna be ahead of us. They'll be able to analyze the scene and the patient and decide, do they need additional help staff wise? Do they need additional equipment or do we stay back? And if they need it, we'll provide it appropriately and if not, we can stay out of harm's way if they will.
Counsel Blatchett.
Mr. Chairman, in a nutshell, all of the questions that have been asked of the fire department and their preparations and so forth, I'd like to ask of the Chief of Police to get his take on it for his crew.
Good afternoon, Glenn Moser, Chief of Police. Well, we, our world's a little bit different than fire service. You know, we, when we're called upon, typically it's an emergency situation where we have really limited ability to not get involved, so to speak, or not have human contact. Last week, I sent a directive to our officers that we needed to ensure that we were taking every precaution available to us. We were limiting the access to the community by reducing our unnecessary contact. We can handle a lot of our complaints via the telephone, which, you know, we'll be doing more so than we have in the past. And, but when we have to, when we have to respond to emergencies, whether they be car accidents or assaults or things of that nature, our officers will be doing what they can to protect themselves. Much like the fire department, we don't have the N95 masks available. And as soon as they become available, we'll be sure to get some for our officers, but currently they are not available to, for us. But we will be practicing all of the things that we talked about as far as social distancing, keeping, you know, keeping a safe distance, hand washing, you know, all of those types of practices to ensure that our officers are as safe as they can be under the circumstances.
Thank you, Chief.
Counsel Kaplan, did you have?
Yes, my question.
Would anyone else like to make a comment, please?
Just another question about.
Could you just step up to the mic so that everybody watching can hear you?
This is being televised, so they can hear the question.
May I go? I think the, I think maybe I could address this to Michelle too, but, or anybody else, you guys too. It seems like testing is very important, you know, and they talk about drive-through testing. So I don't know if Ellsworth has something like that and what the importance of it is. I mean, Michelle mentioned, you know, don't call the hospital, don't call here, don't call here. If you feel you have mild symptoms, stay at home and, you know, work it out, you know, do the proper, you know, precautions and stuff like that. If you get bad, then you have to go to the hospital or something. But that type of person that you tell them to stay home and needs testing, how do they get the testing? And where do they get testing? And Michelle mentioned something about MDI having like a drive-through testing. So I'd like to hear about that.
The key is actually to definitely call ahead so that we can prepare for the patient and you can call your primary care provider. They will send you to the hospital, but you will not get out of your car. People from the hospital will come out in protective equipment and we will swab you there for influenza A, influenza B, RSV, and coronavirus or COVID-19. So when you call ahead, it allows us to prepare for the patient. And yes, we are doing that in MDI. I'm not sure what Northern Light is doing at this time, but I would recommend that tomorrow's meeting, we definitely have somebody from Northern Light or Maine Coast.
Yeah. And if we're, if we're not able to get somebody to be here, which I would assume we will be able to, that would be, that's a great question in terms of being able to find the answer out and post it on our website as a resource. I think it's definitely a question that needs to go to the medical professionals, your primary care providers, to know exactly how that is being managed, how, what your primary care provider is recommending and the CDC guidelines, because that's who's following it. But as a city, we can certainly gather that information and make that available in terms of those recommendations and try to get an answer to that question and post it.
Oh, yes. It's Mark Kaplan. I have another question. This might be out in left field, but, you know, when I went to like Walmart or Shores or Hannaford, it looked like a third world country and, you know, if you're, and if you're trying to get hand sanitizers, there's nothing left, baby wipes, there's nothing left. And it, you know, and the general public here is looking to, you know, to be safe. And I think the, it's all about the common good of the public, not just the individual. So you go to Walmart or you go to any of these stores and you can't even find a hand sanitizer, but meanwhile someone in front of you bought 20 of them. So maybe those stores should be told that should, it should be limited on amount of things that they could get because the average public is not even, doesn't even have it. So I don't know, you have business people, I mean, you have, you know, businesses here that maybe you're not asking them, I mean, maybe you are asking them for certain policies and procedures on how many items a person could get.
Yep. My sense is that the stores are now realizing this and some are rationing the amounts that they're giving out now. I think like a lot of things, you know, this, kind of this wave came on and, so now people have the time to think it through. So I think that's happening, you know, the rationing, not ration is probably the wrong word, but apportioning it. But it's a good, it's a very good point.
But is this, it's not your job as council people to speak to the, to those businesses, is it?
Well, I don't think in terms of, we can't, we can't direct businesses on their practices. I think what's good is in situations like these, I think businesses are attentive to the situations. I think that having the voice of the community to those kinds of suggestions, those can be passed along, but no, at the end of the day, we don't carry that kind of authority to mandate any type of practice. That, even if it came to a situation in the country, that becomes something that only the state and federal government can mandate, how businesses operate. It wouldn't be in our purview to do that.
I know, Mr. Kaplan, I noticed this morning on both the Shaws and the Hannaford websites, they have a scroll across the top of them, they are now limiting some items.
That's the word I was looking for, limiting. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Kaplan.
You're welcome.
I might add that toilet paper is not what you need for this virus. You need Robitussin, Tylenol, and facial tissues.
Well, that's not what's showing up in the store.
And I was surprised how many, I went through Shaw's, the pet aisle right across from the tissue aisle was stocked to the brim. People were not buying food for their pets, they were buying toilet paper. I didn't understand it, but.
Well, just as, this is just a general comment. I think that is part of where we all as a community can try to let fear, diminish the fear, take a deep breath and not let that concern happen because what happens is it feeds on itself. The toilet paper started going because if, if you see somebody running the toilet paper, you're running after it too. Well, I better get mine. And soon that panic takes over and it drives those decisions. So the more we can do to, yes, this is serious, everybody should take it seriously, but we can do it in a planful manner and we can work through it together. And if we do that, to the point about having resources for everybody and those people that need it. The other point that I would make and Manager Cole mentioned this, I think in circumstances like this, we also need to remember that the people that are going to be impacted the most are going to be the individuals who are the most vulnerable. And we already as, as a country, as a city, we always already have a challenge meeting the needs of our most vulnerable populations and we should not forget about them in this. They will have more needs and we should come together as a community to provide the same level of support and resource for those individuals that we do for everyone else. Our priority should not be about running down the aisle to get toilet paper. It should be, how is this impacting somebody who is homeless? And if shelters start to close or not be available, that's going to create more pressure. So as those things happen, let's come together and hopefully present some solutions.
I do have a question I'd like to ask.
Let's go up, sir.
Hi, my name's Robert Walsh. I was wondering, everybody's talking about social distancing and stuff, why are kids still going to school then? I mean, New Hampshire just shut down their statewide and schools canceled till, for a week while the schools get prepared for online. It's not the kids are going to school. For the next week, the teachers are learning it all. And then on the 23rd, no later than, they start school. So why are we waiting for the chance of that one that might get sick?
So I'm not sure that, as a council, I know I'm not in a position to answer what the school board is discussing and decisions being made. I can give you kind of a general sense of what the reality is around the decision-making process. And this is, this gets into having facts. What, the CDC has guidelines and the Maine Department of Education has presented information and has worked with schools in talking about what they recommend. And I know that school systems across the state have been having those conversations. And so you get in that situation where trying to look at fact-based information, recommendations, and then moving that forward. Dora Mills, if you access Facebook and look up Dora Mills, she posted something today on this very issue in terms about what the CDC says about school closures. I posted a little bit of that on my Facebook page the other day. So I think it's sorting through that information, gathering it, and then making decisions around what, what is the best course. And I think as Manager Cole said, the, the school board will be issuing a decision on that. They're talking about it and weighing through that.
Where's the superintendent then? Shouldn't he be here? Emergency meeting, he's the school one. Where is he?
Well, the school board is separate.
Well, I know that, but I'm talking to the superintendent. Everybody's saying it's his responsibility to tell people what's going on. Emergency meeting, where is he? I mean, this is pretty bad. I mean, everybody's asking questions, but I haven't had an answer. So where is he to give these answers?
You mean about whether or not the school is closing or not?
What their plans are.
Yeah.
What they're taking for steps to protect our kids.
Yes.
I mean, he's not even here. That makes me really feel good.
Yeah. I would just say that they have their process. It's actually the superintendent's decision, although I'm sure he's consulting with the school board. My expectation is to receive guidance from the superintendent sometime later today as to what their plans are. I can, yeah, that's, go from there.
All right.
But we're, I would say that we're prepared for any outcome and we'll work toward that.
I hope it doesn't cost somebody.
Hi, Fawn Harmon. I just wanna echo what has already been said, but I, we have a responsibility to keep people safe. I agree that the superintendent not being here is a little concerning. I hope that it's because he's in a meeting making these decisions. I think that I'm concerned about what the information that other school boards and superintendents are getting that are causing them to make decisions to close. Why is that information different for different school boards than it is for ours? In the event that we do have to close, it's gonna create incredible hardships for families to educate their children at home while trying to figure out how to work, find daycare. And I think it's irresponsible not to give parents and the community a heads up about what the plans are. I have a really hard time believing that there's no idea at this point about what the next six, eight weeks are gonna look like. And I don't think where we have any information that is private, that we can't say, okay, so, you know, as of next Tuesday, we may close school for two weeks, make plans. We may close school for eight weeks. You need to be aware and make plans. And I feel like it's irresponsible to leave parents until the last minute to make those decisions.
I would actually have to agree with Fawn that once this decision is made, if we're gonna close school, parents need time to make arrangements for those kids. You know, who's gonna take care of them? You know, if your kid is kindergarten age and you work in, let's say, healthcare and you can't take time off, you have to have time to arrange for daycare. And so the more heads up that they get, the better.
Yeah. And again, I'll reiterate, I expect that we will hear back from the superintendent. I do know that they are working on this and evaluating the situation and doing their planning. I would say though, that we're already impacted or will be by school closures because the number of people who work in Ellsworth, their kids go to outlying school districts and schools in the county, all the way up to John Baptist, which recently announced that they're gonna do distance learning, I believe. And also understand that our, some of our daycare centers may be closing down if the schools close down. So there's gonna be a lot of things to work through and thus my call this morning with Gretchen Wilson and the business community to work together to figure out, you know, how we all work together to, through these things.
So I would like just, I absolutely agree with the points made in terms of, one of the things that we need to do and should do is as decisions are made, and closing a school is a, is a big decision, and there should be the information that goes along with it. What are we trying to accomplish if we close the schools? Why? What is the reason for it and what went into the decision? And what is the expected outcome and what happens next? Because, and I think that is the challenge that not only the schools, but other businesses are making in terms of trying to figure out as information, this, I'll tell you, on Friday, there was a different sense of direction in terms of the larger community and some of the schools that closed yesterday on Friday were not going to be closing. They had not planned on that start on Friday. And then all of a sudden yesterday, in 24 hours, there was this kind of a rapid change in positioning. And so I think in fairness, it is weighing that complex issue and trying to come up with the best decision because it does have an effect in terms of, once you close the schools, there's a consequence to it. If you don't close the school, there's a consequence to it. And trying to sort through that and come up with the very best decision for the community is difficult. But I think at the end of the day, I would agree that what everybody should be able to have is an understanding about that and an awareness that yes, whatever decision is made, there's a consequence. So what are we going to do about those consequences? What's next? And if you're not getting those answers that you need, I would certainly encourage you to ask those, raise those questions. I know that there are some very good members of the school board who would be very happy to take those concerns and bring them forward and get answers for you.
Yeah.
So is Superintendent Higgins planning to be at the meeting tomorrow night to be available for questioning?
I assume he will come. I have not discussed Monday night with him. We've been living in this weekend. We haven't gotten to Monday night yet, but I will make sure he is aware of that and invite him to come.
Would, could you frame it as more of a request?
Yes, I will.
Than just an invite? To be honest, in reply to the last two speakers, I fully expected that he would be here today.
Yeah.
It just, it makes no sense that he isn't. I'm very disappointed that he. It just, it makes no sense that he isn't. I'm very disappointed that he isn't. And I will go out of my way to talk to him and find out why he isn't. At 10:00 or 3:00 on a Sunday, if you're going to close the schools down, then I would think that one would know by now. And because the parents have to make plans. If they need childcare tomorrow morning, they need to know now. They don't need to know tonight at 7:00 or 8:00. They need to know now. And I'm sorry that he isn't.
You know, what would perhaps sound like a trickle-down effect could become a deluge when you think about what can happen when you change one or two or three things. One of these very big things, of course, is closing a school. What does it do to childcare? What happens to the YMCA daycare?
Well, and the YMCA is here, I was going to say tonight because we normally meet at night, but this afternoon, and we did receive a letter from Peter Faragor, the director of the Y, that if the school closes down, the daycare will be closed. Is that a correct rec? So we know, you know, what the domino effect will be.
And then what happens with parents who, one or both parents--
Yeah.
--in the everyday sense, who gets to go to work?
Yeah.
Who has to stay home? That, as I said, that trickle-down effect can suddenly become a flood.
That's the need for us to reach out into the community and work with our partners and try to figure out how neighbor helps neighbor, business helps business, organization helps organization, try to figure out ways around this. Mr. Chair, I got a call in, no, excuse me, I've got a message from David Nichols, who I believe lives on Elm Street. No?
Yes.
Oh, I was right for once. Yes, on Elm Street, and he says, what about trash collection? And I don't believe that will be impacted. We contract with Pine Tree, does the collection. So to our knowledge, that hasn't--
We will contact them tomorrow to see if there's going to be any--
Right.
--changes to that.
All right. But as far as we know, we have heard nothing to the contrary. Anyways, I wanted to get that in there.
Just getting back to personal protective equipment, this virus can live up to nine days on a surface, depending on the surface. Does, do the garbage collectors have proper equipment to protect themselves?
Are they talking at our own transfer station?
I think it's about Pine Tree.
Curbside? Curbside, that would be up to them. I will find that out as well tomorrow.
Mr. Chairman, I have another question here. I want to know if Superintendent Higgins was invited to this meeting. Do you know?
Yes, I invited him. And he has said he's, he has been in meetings today. They're doing their own meetings and planning, and my understanding from him would be they would be putting out something by late afternoon.
I see a school board member here.
Do you know her?
I think that means he wants you to--
He talks about cogitively.
Is the whole school board--
He gives a shoulder for dinner.
Is the whole school board not involved in this decision?
No, we're not. We have, I have not been asked one question.
Can you--
I have been--
Why don't you come up to the--
So I've had questions. Is this, is closing school something that requires a policy change in which we would need a vote? I have been told no. I have some questions just about school closings, which I have gotten answers to. However, everything that has been transmitted to me has been stipulated that this is confidential. Therefore, I feel like I'm not allowed to share it. And yes, I've been, I was fielding questions till 4:00 AM last night, and as soon as I woke up this morning, I mean, it's nonstop. And I understand, this is, this is a lot for our families. You know, it's our kids. And on one hand, I do think our kids are like the healthiest little people, but they go home to vulnerable people. So I under, and so many people need to make plans for childcare and food and other things. I get it. I want to show the world what I know, but I am pretty sure, according to the emails I have, that I'm not allowed to share that unless you have different information legally, which I can and cannot. But as far as your question, have we been asked? No. I have not been asked by Superintendent Higgins one single question. It is my understanding that he has the authority to make these decisions, but as I said, I have some questions on some very fine lines. I brought those up to the rest of the board. I said I would be at this meeting today because I thought, because this is a calendar change, and this involves policy, that this would require a vote. So I let the rest of the board know that I would be here and that I would hope they would be here. I was told by most of them that they think Higgins is doing a great job, and I think, yeah, and most, I think he works extremely hard, and he's been in touch with all the right people, and he has been listening to Scientific Fact. But we are a board of five. We are not designed to govern by one person making those decisions. I have asked every single board I can get my hands on. They've all met. They've all had questions. We had a meeting a week ago, less than a week ago, on Monday night, in which, you know, that would have been a great opportunity to talk about these things, to have these questions answered that were going to come our way inevitably. That was not the topic of the meeting. So, you know, I, so that's, I know, I hope that answers your question. I'm happy to answer more.
Yeah. It answers my question. Not exactly the answer I was hoping for, but it--
And, you know, it's not for nothing, but I kind of have access to an expert in this field, so questions about this would have been great. Yeah.
She was nicer to you than you were to her.
For those who don't know, Bob is on the federal disaster team. He responds to all kinds of disasters, medically, things in the environment, you name it. And he's actually been on the committee for the president when they want to know, there's a dirty bomb and this is going to happen, what do we do? The president asks my husband when they want to know stuff like this. So literally, we have an expert on these things right here. If anybody wanted to know what to do, we've got somebody to ask questions and find answers to. It's a very, very valuable resource. And, you know, people might have questions in this day and time, and they know where to find us.
So I think one of the things that you highlight that I think is really important, I've mentioned this a couple of times today, it's the process. I'm not an expert, but the process is one by which getting the people who do have the expertise to weigh in so that the decision-makers are using that guidance to make the decisions. But clearly, when you're here today, there are different perspectives in terms of this particular issue about closing schools. I can tell you, I spoke to an expert this morning who has one opinion that's different than the CDC. So it is a difficult issue, and it does have those both sides. And this is a type of situation that we will run into a lot of this. And at the end of the day, those decisions that get made, the best thing we can do is make sure that we've had a good process, that the voices have been heard, that there's been participation, and then there's a good explanation and communication back to why certain things are happening so that people understand it, and also so that we can then anticipate and support those consequences that result from those decisions. Because we probably will have different perspectives at the end of the day, but that doesn't mean that there aren't without consequences. But the process should be a good process, and if we need to learn from that, I hope we do.
It would be great.
Just so you know, she's the seventh person to adjust that microphone today.
Yeah, it's getting feedback right--
You could have told us after 2:00.
Do you have your protective gloves on?
Was there somebody? Thank you, Heidi.
This is just a point of information. And it's from a medical standpoint. It's from a medical standpoint, and I think everybody should realize this, because I think symptoms are very important. And, you know, from my reading, you know, over some time, over the past few weeks, a lot of what the CDC and WHO, World Health Organization, are getting their clinical symptoms are from us going over to China and finding out what's going on. And what was surprising to me, and this is what I want to relate to families here, you know, we're always told that it's cough, you know, fever, cough, shortness of breath. But if you look at all the statistics of all the cases in China that everybody's been looking at, and what the CDC and WHO are finding out, it's not just fever. It could be even less than 102. It could be a low-grade fever, okay? And also, high on the list, I mean, fever's 100%. Fatigue is 97%. Muscle aches are 85%. It's the shortness of breath and cough that comes on five days after you get the virus and the symptoms come on. So there are other symptoms other than those three that they're talking about. And that's important to really understand because, from my perspective, I always thought I could think, well, it's not the coronavirus, it's influenza. But it's not true. And in fact, the point that Michelle was making, not to say that she's not right in this, but a lot of them have nausea and diarrhea. So there are symptoms that all those people in China, the symptoms that they're having, they're not being told specifically, you know, to us. We're only looking at, well, you'll suspect, that's why I said testing is very important, because the kid, you know, 97% have fatigue, 85% have anorexia or poor appetite and muscle aches. It's almost like influenza. And it's not being told. So as a point of information, I just want you to understand that because this is what the statistics coming out of China are.
Thank you.
Let's--
Thank you, Gary.
My name is Matthew Coffin. I've been reading about the coronavirus rate lately online, and I'd like to make two points. Number one, antibacterial products like hand gels and everything do not kill viruses. And number two, there's good information at the, excuse me, at the national laboratories such as the Oak Ridge National Laboratory, the Lawrence Livermore National Laboratory, and the Lawrence Berkeley National Laboratory. And they're keeping their information updated to be current. So that's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Clyde Cushing. Just to answer the school question, the email just came out about 30 seconds ago. Schools are being closed on Monday, after the end of the day on Monday. So parents just got that email about a minute or two ago. So that should answer that question.
Thank you.
Question?
I'm just curious if there's any coordination with, like, the food banks or anything. I know there's a lot of people reaching out wanting to help people who are going to be affected if they're not able to work in terms of organizing a place for people to drop food, whether it's for loaves and fishes to then, you know, sort of disseminate out into the community.
We'll be working with the General Assistance Director tomorrow, talking about those types of things. So there'll be more information.
Mr. Cushing, how long does it say the schools will be closed?
Just, the email went out to parents.
Okay.
Mr. Cushing just told us.
I was just going to, I was, just went out and called Superintendent Higgins and said it would be good time to share with the public before this meeting concludes. So it's out there now. Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Blanchett.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to reiterate to everybody how important this is to us as a board. Like all of you, this is new. Will we stumble along the way? More than likely, yes. We're trying our damnedest. We're all paying attention to the information we're getting from the CDC, the hospitals, the professionals, and sometimes even the headlines, although I try to avoid those. If you have any questions, please reach out to all of us. We didn't, the chairman didn't call this meeting today lightly. I know that he went back and forth and agonized over it. As far as I know, this is the first time since May 8th of 1933, the day Ellsworth burned, that an emergency meeting of the Ellsworth City Council has been called on a Sunday. That is how serious we are taking this. Thank you.
Manager Cole.
I see Representative Krahowski in attendance today, representative. Senator Lucchini also contacted me several times. He's down in Augusta. And we're, everyone's reaching out to try to help, and that's what, it's going to require us working with Augusta and each other. And ultimately, the federal government, as we work through this thing. So Representative, thank you for coming today.
So, so, Counselors, tomorrow we are scheduled for a meeting, as I scratch my face, sir.
I can't help it.
We are scheduled for a regular scheduled meeting tomorrow, and my assumption is that we will continue to have that meeting, knowing that there's some important business on that. Obviously, one of the things that, just for the public to be aware of, is it is a public meeting, so it is open and people can attend. We certainly run into that situation that the more people gathering in one spot is recommended not to happen. So I don't say that to discourage attendance, just to be mindful of that, particularly if you are in the class of being a vulnerable member of our community, to tune into Facebook. What we can do is, and we've been doing it today, is we can monitor Facebook and try to field some questions as they come in to make sure that we answer some of those things so that everybody can participate. So just a reminder to, that that is available. And in between now and tomorrow, if you have specific questions that you're looking for answers to, please email either the city staff or any one of us. We'll bring that to the table, and we'll try to line up some of those resources. Counsel Miller was the one that suggested having Northern Light and, I think, the Hancock County--
Yeah, Andy's saying it.
So we're going, we'll try to get that in place as well. And if there are other people that we should have here, obviously, the school with the school closure, trying to address some of the concerns. We can put that all in the mix for our meeting tomorrow. Counsel Blanchett.
I have some questions here that have come in from people. Will tomorrow night's council meeting be postponed to held online only? No, the meeting is as scheduled. Also, one from a person that says the Ellsworth Hospital now has a tent set up in the Ellsworth parking lot. And a person wants to know, how will the City of Ellsworth Council hold a meeting tomorrow night in light of the city hall lockdown? How can citizens participate? As far as I know, both the front and back doors will be unlocked--
Yes.
--prior to the meeting for people to come in. And lastly, why is the board not practicing social distancing during the meeting? And lastly, why is the board not practicing social distancing during the meeting about precautions? Good question.
Yeah.
I just want to say, I have my choice. I could have sat over there, I could have stood over there, and still participated in the meeting. As long as I was in the room, then I can participate from the back corner by Dr. Kaplan if I'd wanted to. This was my choice, I chose to sit here.
Aren't you over 65?
Not quite.
Almost.
Almost, yeah.
You want that stricken from the memo, from the minutes?
And elderly is 65, by the way. I haven't hit that yet.
And I think you've gotten the answer in terms of tomorrow night. I mean, the meeting will be open to the public, we're just trying to give accommodations for those who may not want to be in a group, and they can do it remotely.
And I don't know why I'm the one getting all the questions.
You're just accessible.
Which are all 65.
And, and to that point, though, I do think, you know, we're, we're trying to maintain that balance in terms of having the open process, and having the community involved, and having access to these meetings, balancing it with the recommendations about limiting crowd size. We're certainly well under what the state has suggested, and will continue to do that, but obviously, the way the chairs are set up, that's why really coming into this, knowing your situation, if you're, if you're not feeling well, if you have a fever or whatever, we would certainly ask that you don't attend, participate online, ask us questions, and we'll try to create that openness through the social media. Things might change as we go forward, depending on how this proceeds.
And I would say that there have been discussions statewide, and our listener, Tammy, about other town managers, city managers, about is it possible to do meetings remotely, you know, and, and those kinds of things, and that may get resolved, but not by tomorrow night.
No.
We may do it differently in the future.
I think, obviously, one of the things, if somebody were to, in this, that works here, were to contract it, then that might be a different decision for a period of time for that cleaning to take place. All that will be public and, and available. Councilman.
So I'm assuming that the Y is closed as well now? The daycare?
Yep, we will be closing at the end of business on Monday. So the childcare will be open, all child care, the day the after-school program votes at 5:30, and it's closed up.
Would you like to say that up there so that everybody at home can hear?
Hi, I'm Peter Farragut, I'm the director of the Y. And just to let you know the process, we did have an emergency response team put together that included a lot of the directors, board members, superintendents, Senator Lukini. And so we carefully thought out this process. It is a recommendation from the National Y that, that we do close, if the schools close, so we're following that, that recommendation. So to answer your question, we will be open tomorrow, and then we will close down at the end of business day, which is 9:00 PM for the Y. We also looked at the decision of keeping the YMCA Wigan Center open, and we decided that we would close down to be consistent, and because where would everybody go if it was open? They would go to the Y in the afternoon, we have about 100 kids at the Y. So that was one of the reasons why we closed down everything. It's a tough one, we have 148 staff people, and we're concerned.
Is it unimportant?
So, pardon?
Is it unimportant?
I like reading that, so, but yeah, it's, it's, it's difficult, so, and our, our decision has been supported by a lot of our parents to this point, so, it's a bummer.
Well, I, I'm in the middle of my, well, close to the middle of my eighth decade. I feel good.
You look good.
But I'm going to try to be a little more careful.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'll, I'll stay home a lot more.
Thanks, folks, and I do agree, sir, that together, we're going to win this thing, you know, but we've got to do it together, you know, and the YMCA is in full support of our school system, and anything that we need to do to get rid of this thing quickly, so, thank you.
Councilman Chet.
And they keep coming in. Someone else wanting to make a comment about limiting visiting to area nursing homes and senior housing, as the very young and very old are more at risk.
Yeah, I can, I could comment, I can't comment specifically for specific facilities, but generally, there are practices being implemented in residential programs, whether they're nursing facilities, group care programs, where visitors are not being allowed for this period of time, and they're using alternative means for, for visitation to take place. And I think in those healthcare facilities, they are certainly well aware of, of the risks and, and making those plans to address that. Councilman.
Are there any rainy day funds or any special parts of general assistance? Because with parents being home, some of them will not be able to afford their rent, or to afford to pay their electric bill, and so they're going to have to make cold, hard choices. So what do we have in place for these people?
So this is exact reason why we have a fund balance policy, to ensure that we have a few months' worth of money available for a couple of months to continue to operate. I think right now, we're at 18 or 19%, I think, right around that. So, so in case of a situation like this, we'll have extra monies to be able to help pay for these types of situations.
I think you're referring to general assistance in terms of the programs available to help individuals.
Right, but that fund balance is able to help offset the additional costs that we'll have.
Got it. And again, not sure on a state level as well, what they may be looking at in those kinds of circumstances.
But we're about to find out.
Well, I'll share what I know. So as you probably heard, the legislature is planning to fast-track emergency legislation to respond to COVID-19. We will be meeting on Tuesday to do that. Part of that will be adjustments to appropriations, especially the supplemental budget, as I understand. Some different issues that we've been looking at relate especially to, obviously, Health and Human Services work, labor, education, et cetera. So all those committees, the chairs have basically been meeting with leadership in order to determine what we need to do right now to have the state be in a good situation moving forward. And we'll be acting on that legislation on Tuesday before we adjourn, because we all are packed even more tightly than you are where we sit in the State House, and people come from all over the state, and we then return to our home areas, so we are trying to limit our own possibility as vectors. But there's a lot that's moving very quickly, and we're trying to do what we can. Some different ideas that I've heard would relate to, for instance, protecting renters who are unable to pay their rent from eviction, as was mentioned, about unemployment benefits, expanding those. So, so those are some of the things that are being discussed, and I can't say what the final bills will look like until actually Tuesday when we vote on them, but we are working very hard on that, and sort of splitting our time between trying to understand how we can help our communities and also working in Augusta. So Senator Lukini and I have been in touch, and will be in touch after this meeting as well.
I think...
I can try to answer any questions, but that's sort of the, the balance of what I'm aware of at this moment.
Quick question. Any plan with TIF housing or Section 8 housing, maybe bypassing the next month's portion? A lot of Section 8 patients, patients, renters, they have a co-pay, or there's a portion of their rent that they have to pay. Is there any plan to eliminate the, the next month's payment until this thing blows over?
I'm not sure of that at this point. I know, I was communicating with the chair of the Labor and Housing Committee, and they did work on a labor package on Friday. I haven't seen that language yet. Obviously, it will be important that all the members of leadership agree so that, because all of these votes will need two-thirds support by the House and Senate, so we want to make sure that everybody agrees, but I'm sure that is something that they've talked about, because that is within the committee's jurisdiction. Thank you, thank you all for hosting this meeting, because I think it helps, you know, our constituents understand that we are all taking this very seriously, and trying to work together, that is the most important thing. Working together and communicating, and distancing from microphones is probably also a good idea.
Mr. Chair, I did a scan of my phone, any additional messages? And I have nothing further. Do you have any calls from the outside?
Nothing I haven't brought up.
Mail.
I just wanted, I'm actually a homeschooling parent, and just wanted to sort of put out there to parents that there's a ton of homeschooling groups local to this area, lots of online learning platforms offering free subscriptions to schools and to individuals while schools are closed, or just resources of like, what do I do with my kid all day long? So just wanted to put that out there, that there's a ton of information on those Facebook groups for, for parents to access or ask questions.
Mr. Chair, I just got a text from Superintendent Higgins, and he'd just like to clarify that, that he was in emergency meetings today with leadership, finalizing the plans for the closure, to make sure that they have accurate communication to the public, and that's why he was not here today. Just want to pass that along.
All right, we will reconvene tomorrow.
Mr. Chairman, just one more thing before we break up. About an hour ago, Councilor Kaplan said what we need, the materials and so on, that will help everyone get over this. I want to add one thing to that list, if I may. Prayer. It's not going to hurt any of us, and it can go a long way.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to the chair.
Second.
On paper.
Thank you.